So, good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees Meeting for September 21st. If we could rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are having a little bit of an issue with our internet connection to our livestream, so we'll be recording the meeting and placing it up probably sometime tomorrow on our website and social media, but we are recording it and we ask anybody coming to the microphone to speak loud enough for it to pick up. With that, welcome, everyone. And Clerk Robertson, would you care to take care of the roll?
Certainly. Trustee Hugo?
Here.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer is absent. I, of course, am present. Superintendent, Supervisor Bennett, excuse me.
Yes, present.
Six members here. A quorum.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Trustee Fike.
Support.
Support by Trustee Hugo.
Okay, for the agenda.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Record roll call, Mr. Supervisor, if I may.
Okay.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes. Okay, we are very fortunate this evening to have a, I see it under privileged presentation, are swearing in for our deputy fire chief, Kent Miracle. And to help me do that, we have Clerk Robertson with the book.
With the record of oaths, Mr. Supervisor, if you'll just bear with me for just a moment.
Dennis, any words with regard to this position?
So, number one, we'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for authorizing the conversion of this position from a formerly was a part-time position to a full-time position. We think it goes a long way towards moving the fire department operations to the next level. We also want you to know that Kent's been with the department for 37 years. Kent, am I close, correct?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven years, so while we're swearing in, Kent, it's been 37 years in the making to get to this position. We're so excited to have him here. We think he's just gonna be an amazing asset coming onboard with us full-time because it's part of the reorganization efforts of the overall township and one of the reorganization efforts in the fire department. He will be heavily involved in the day-to-day operations. He helps set up, you know, the chain of command, frees up Chief Burdette to focus on some other areas for the fire department. So, I can tell you that the guys, as you can see by the room being so full, have the utmost respect for this guy. And again, thanks to the board for allowing us to create this position into a full-time position because it really is taking Grand Blank Township Fire Department to the next level.
So, we'll ask Deputy Fire Chief to-
Step forward, so I can administer the oath.
Okay. Okay, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm-
I do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties-
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of Deputy Chief-
The office of Deputy Chief.
In and for the township of Grand Blank-
In and for the township of Grand Blank.
County of Genesee and State of Michigan-
County of Genesee and the State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
If you would, please, if you would, please sign here. Sign on this line right here.
Very good. Excellent. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
What some of you may not know is Kent loves to speak in public.
One thing I'm working on. Thank you, thank you all for your support and congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Tell us where you're taking us next.
Well, I think the way the township is growing, I think we can, there's a lot of things that we can get done with the department. I think a great set of guys with the leadership with Bob, the chief, I think we can go, take this fire department to the next place where we want to go with the growth of the township coming. So, looking forward to it very much.
Very good. Well, it's evidenced by the number of your team you have here in support of you this evening. It's pretty evident, you know, that you've got their support and the chief, and I think we are poised for growth and, you know, the board here is working towards that. And I mean, a great fire department is part of that equation and we, you know, were able to fix up this little fire department overnight practically to accommodate our fire department, but we're looking for even bigger and better things in the next couple of years in terms of housing for our fire department, so we're excited about that, too. In fact, I think, well, there was a meeting today with regard to the building facilities, so we're moving along on that as well.
I look forward to-
Well, thanks.
-taking care of them. That's, especially with the group of guys, people that we have, I think it'll be-
Very good.
Great.
We're looking forward to having you around full-time and I'm sure the chief is as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to, I don't know, you want to introduce your family, Kent? Deputy Chief, you want to introduce your family to us?
Yeah, my mother, Sue, my father, Harold, my sister, Crystal, my daughter, Ashley, my grandson, and my wife, Amy.
Very nice. And thank you to all of our firefighters who are here this evening. We appreciate your work.
All righty.
Okay. Next on our agenda is public comment, and so we just ask that you keep to three minutes and please give us your name and address for the record. We'll start anywhere in the room that we'd like to. Annalisa, feel free. Good evening.
Good evening. So, I have to just speak loudly? This isn't working or?
It's working.
Okay. Annalisa Scheible, 5278 Crestwood Drive. The Grand Blank Township Historic District presents Perry Pioneer Days. I will have flyers to hand out, but the event is on Saturday, October 9th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There will be a petting zoo, kids crafts, face painting, pioneer games and demonstrations, the historic Perry homestead tours, live archaeology, I cannot say that word.
You got archaeological digs.
Artifact and local history displays and a Civil War reenactment camp. There will be music and refreshments as well. So, it's a family-filled event with lots of fun and you can learn about the history. There's walking trails behind the historic Perry home. Like I said, petting zoo, and we'd love to have you, the township board, come and join us and everyone else here, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful event, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to make a public comment?
Good evening. Editor 7212 Porter Road.
Evening.
I don't want to whip a dead horse here, but I see the senior centers in this packet again for cleaning. I wonder if that's really operations or if that's building maintenance, but I do have to bring this up again, that on every dollar spent there, the city pays 40 cents. When we sell the thing, they get 50 cents. They got a 50-cent asset there. They have a 25% profit off of the residents of this township. That agreement was made 30, 40 years ago. It needs to be revisited. Back then, things were different, a lot different, so I'm not labor that anymore. At your last meeting, there was a lot of people that spoke about RVs and trailers, et cetera. And it was, the statement was made that we need to accommodate those people. The ordinance does. That ordinance accommodates those people with trailers, RVs, et cetera. So, understand that. It does accommodate them. It really disturbs me that we had thoughts here of changing the ordinance, making it more lenient for those people. We, yeah, we gotta take care of them, people. They gotta have a place to do it. We have to have rules and regulations, but we can't have eyesores either. So, anyhow, it's that weekend, I started, I had some family events to go to, and most of my family lives in other communities, so I started asking, what's the ordinance in your community? What's it like? And they all were very similar to ours. In fact, ours is a little more lenient than all the communities. I even checked with Monday Township, they're the same as we are. They don't allow people to all, during the summer, in their driveway. So, you know, and then I went to, I checked Woodhaven. My brother lives in Woodhaven. You don't bring a trailer. I mean, you checked out their ordinance online, and if you want to put your trailer in the backyard, you put it on three-and-a-half inches of concrete. You make sure it's not hooked up to your house. You make sure there's no contaminants going in the ground. They take it to another step, environmental. Okay, so, you know, that just being said, and the residential codes, I remember when I was going for my building license, the reason we have to be so far off of the lot line and keep it open is for the fire department, so that if you have a fire in your residential property, they can in turn put it out and not have a RV or a camper or a boat or whatever there. So, we have to look at all of these aspects and not be so fast to judge, and I don't want to see our police department ever go to a residential call at a residential people's prosperity and have to negotiate and maneuver around a trailer where they can't see. It's supposed to be a residential piece of property. Now, if these are commercial properties, it'd be different. So, in my opinion, this is my opinion now, I don't care if it's a 100-foot lot, 100 by 100, I don't care if it's 100 acres. I don't think we should see, if it's a residential piece of property, RVs and trailers and boats and all this stuff stored. It's residential. It's where your children play. It's where we all are. I want a community with curb appeal. That looks good. When my family comes through Grand Blank, I want to be proud of where I live. I don't want them to be looking at blight and trailer, I'm not saying trailers are blight, but there's a place for them. We have RV storages, areas. We need to lead this community. We're looking at, for example, Davison, what they're doing. By the way, I went to their website, City and Township. I can't see any ordinance other than ours, so maybe they haven't gotten this new ordinance we talked about on their website yet, but we need to be leaders in Genesee County. We don't need to be followers. We're the biggest ones around with all the money. We're the growing place, so let's be leaders. We are not Davison. We are Grand Blank Township, and we have to keep it that way. And with that being said, don't forget about the unfunded liability. We need to address it. Thank you.
I think we beat Davison in football this week, didn't we?
We sure did.
I think we have somebody on our staff from Davison, too.
Severe beating.
Anyways, anybody else have public comment? Okay, thank you very much. We'll bring it back here to the board, and the next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda.
Record roll call for that.
Yep. Motion by Ms. Hugo. Support by Mr. White. Any discussion?
Okay. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six-nothing, motion passes.
Okay, we're on to old business, and it's actually new business, too, because we're doing a lot of new stuff, but I guess we call it old business because it's our strategic plan and lots of exciting things happening under that category. And Mr. Limid, we're going to talk a little bit about IT this evening, right?
That's correct. We have Nathan Lucavelt is here, and he's gonna kind of walk you through the updates from the strategic plan goal. You guys had selected the infrastructure IT upgrades with a key objective to make sure we had a plan in place to update IT infrastructure along with off-site backup. You know, it's really started with that IT assessment that we did a year ago. We brought on Sentinel Technologies. Sentinel assisted us by doing a complete assessment and telling us some critical needs areas. We were able to hire a employee through Sentinel, Nathan, and we were lucky to get him onboard. He came in on a six-month contract, and at the end of the six months' contract, thanks again to the board for allowing us to turn that into a employee agreement, and now that he's back onboard, as of August, the last week of August, I think, was he's officially an employee of Grand Blank Township. But I'll let Nathan kind of walk you through some of the things. He did a pretty complete job on the strategic plan grid to show you some of the work that's gone in so far, but it's probably easier for me to have him walk you through the big items that you need to know about.
Yes, so, thanks, Dennis.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, I wrote kind of a list here to go over some of the major achievements we've done or gone through this year. We have been, a lot of this year really is planning for future years and things like that. There's a lot that goes into replacing a lot of these things, so. This year, we've completed a network closet cleanup project, so that was kind of in preparation for replacing our network switches, which is on the agenda today, to kind of clean up all the, you know, the spaghetti of cables that basically over 30 years, the network closet has been, you know, been in place, and as people needed to move things, they kind of just moved stuff all over the place, and it completely blocked all the network switches, so. Really important that we clean that all out of there so that we have an open view of the switches, and we can get an idea of what is needed for replacements, as well as being able to more easily remove them and plan out, you know, where everything goes back once you put it back together. So, the next major thing is the computer systems and upgrades or replacements. So, IT here, I started here in March, but in IT here has always tried to replace a certain amount of computers every year. Aging computer systems that may be running out-of-date operating systems, potentially security vulnerabilities and risks and that because they no longer receive updates. Also, we want to make sure the employees can work efficiently with a system that can handle today's technology. So, we have replaced over 19 end-of-life computer systems this year and are actively currently working on six additional computers that we plan to have in place by the end of October. We'll probably replace more than that this year as well. I'm kind of heavily pushing and working towards removing some of the end-of-life operating systems that we have here, not just the old computers. There are a few, and that would clear up some vulnerabilities that we potentially have, We're also working to migrate our email systems to Office 365. Our existing email server is getting a little old, and it's time that we replace that. The township has decided to move away from having onsite server for that and actually move that to the cloud, which will also bring a lot of collaboration tools and things like that to help the employees collaborate together and work more efficiently. So, we're pretty far into the planning stages of that right now. We've run into a little bit of a hiccup as far as cleaning up some of the existing emails. Over the 30 years, they've had the email system here, there's just a lot of emails that we needed to go through individually and determine, you know, what is required and what is not required for us to be moving. So, we're almost done with that. We did have some issues with that exchange server being a little unstable after we had a power outage, a power outage that was caused by a vehicle taking out one of the telephone poles outside the building here, and unfortunately, that caused some sort of, my guess, an electrical surge, and the backup battery we had in place did not protect that specific server, and over the next two months, it was unstable, would crash randomly and eventually completely crashed. I was able to get that repaired by replacing the motherboard the next day. The next morning, we had overnighted parts, and we had the mail server back up and running by the end of the day so that we can continue having a stable email until we move away from the old server. Let's see. As I said, a lot of it is planning, so there's a lot of planned future end-of-life server replacements all the way through 2025, so just taking a look at our existing servers and when they're gonna be end-of-life and when we need to start replacing them. So, a lot of those have been put in, basically, a CIP plan for the next five years, and I have it actually planned out. I think there's like a few servers the next couple of years, every year. We've also created a plan for an internal service fund that I hope gets approved and-
Internal service.
Internal service fund. So, it's something that I was working with finance to create, and it allows IT to basically gather the funding it needs from different departments using a, it's based on employee count and how much the specific department uses a specific server. So, if a server is only used by two departments, or the DPW only uses a certain server, then it only pulls funding from the specific departments that use it, essentially. So, we more fairly bill the departments, and that's gonna help me in the future continue to repair and replace these servers as we need to. I think that's a big problem in IT here in the past, is that we were not necessarily always getting some of the funding that we need, and I'm so glad that we have a board here that's, you know, helping us out there, so. I hope that the internal service fund's gonna help us, and in the future, I plan on possibly expanding that out to include maybe some like software licensing that we all use, our Office 365 licensing and things like that, potentially in the future.
Can you repeat that, Nathan? I didn't get that last part. What is that?
So, the internal service fund, I kind of have-
Oh, for the-
It's fairly basic this year, just to make sure that, you know, it works and we get it, all the kinks worked out in it, and then I plan on potentially, you know, including licensing and things like that in there as well. Yeah. See if I missed anything. I'm sure I did. We have replaced, I think, five or six security cameras in the township buildings as well to give a more clearer picture when we're looking at those kind of things. There's a lot of older security cams that are 10, 15 years old, so we're working on replacing them as we find the time and the money for that. Next year, there's a major plan for off-site backups, so currently, the township does not have off-site backup capability, so we plan on replacing the kind of the outdated backup servers and systems that we have, and then also working with a cloud provider and a new backup software that we're gonna be able to use to back up to the cloud on a regular basis. So, obviously, the, you know, major benefits of having off-site cloud backups, as long as you properly encrypt them and secure them, and we control the encryption keys, is that if something happens to this building or, you know, some, you know, with, you know, the crazy cybersecurity world that we live in right now with all the ransomware that's taken over and targeting governments, it's important that we have a lot of our data backed up outside of this system or in different locations so that if one of them gets, if one of them is targeted, we have a way to get back to functioning township, basically. So, and also, if we have a flood come in through here or something, a fire that could potentially wipe out some of our hard drives or backup tapes and things like that, that would kind of help in that situation as well. So, that is planned for next year. That is pretty much what we've got going on as of right now.
Anything else that you want to mention? I just want to say, you know, each one of these things you mentioned are huge items. I mean-
Yeah.
That closet cleanup, you know, I don't know if you guys have before pictures and after, but-
Oh, it's crazy, yeah.
I saw the before, and I haven't been in there to see the after, to be honest, but I'll have to go look at it, but each one of these things you mentioned are very significant upgrades to our township, and I think you guys, you know, make a great team, and, you know, the thing I'm amazed at is that our downtime has been virtually nil. You know, you replace a switch, you replace, you know, even just doing the cable cleanup, being able to accomplish that without shutting down the township for a week. I mean, especially when we've had municipalities around us, including the county that, you know, shut down for over a week, maybe a couple of weeks with ransomware or whatever, but, I mean, when you start working on equipment that's as old as what we have, you're bound to have some downtime with some unexpected things happening, and I'm just amazed that you guys have been able to, you know, do as much as you have been without us having to shut down operations and closing up the office.
Yeah, we definitely try our best to do after-hours work or, you know, try to spread it across a longer distance if possible.
But I think, you know, these are all things that in our strategic plan, we said that, you know, we wanted to see moving forward to keep us, to bring us up to date, and I know, you know, maybe we didn't have the money in the past to devote to it, but it's imperative that we continue going down this path, and I'm glad to hear that our security, you know, we're working on improving that. I know, I can't tell you how many emails a day I get that are phishing scams, you know, with people wanting things, and I have not sent out any texts or emails to anybody asking for gift cards or any of that. We had one of our DDA board members show up, was it this week? Unless I showed up earlier this week or last week with gift cards in hand.
Really?
Somebody was texting him. He thought it was me texting him, telling him that I was in a meeting and that I needed him to bring $300 worth of Walmart gift cards to the town, or scratch off the back and text him to me. We've sent out numerous emails to you guys as well as DDA board members, telling them, do not, you know, when you get an email, check and see what that URL is, you know, what the address is, because it's not coming from my email address.
Yeah, a couple of other things I want to add to that, with that in mind, is next year, we do actually plan on implementing phishing, basically phishing training, so that it teaches you guys to, or the employees to basically identify certain key points within an email and how you can identify it being a phishing scam, so. We also recently put in place, as you already know, a little disclaimer on emails now, which is just a simple thing you can do, but it basically is an easy way to tell this is coming from outside the network. It is not an email from an internal employee. Sometimes, a spoof email might make it through or something like that, so it's just another thing that we can add on the top of there to help you realize you might need to check on what's going on with this email.
Sure.
Yeah.
I know at one time, Mr. Limid, we were working on digitizing a lot of building department, you know, plans and that, and I don't know where the law stands on that these days. If we've got a store, you know, I know we've got just thousands- If we've got a store, you know, I know we've got just thousands of building documents. And I'm not sure, you know, if the law has changed, and Mr. Laddie might know, in terms of how long or can we scan those things and save having to have storage space? I don't know.
The record retention schedules are still the same, and if you are going to store them in a digital format, all of our building department files have been scanned in. We actually have them in a storage unit where the place that scanned them in is still holding on to them because we're just out of space here, you know, currently till we make some more moves. But as long as you have the ability, once you've scanned them in, you know, digitally or you've got it electronically, you have to have the ability to upgrade it to whatever is next, and who knows what's next? I mean, it's kind of like, you know, we put them on an eight-track, then we moved it to a cassette, and then we, you know, moved it into, you know, whatever.
CD or whatever.
It just keeps on going. It's the same thing that we have to be able to do that. We can't wait. In fact, Nate had an interesting quandary even with a system, an old system that we used over at the police department with the NS400, and, you know, trying to make sure that we could get all the data off of that to make sure that it moved, you know, into the digital age. And it was like taking an abacus and trying to bring it up, and we had to, he found somebody, hired somebody that could come in and actually pull the data from that system so that we could move it up into the, you know, 21st century. And it's one of those things where you just, you have to be diligent on it. When you see that it's changing, we have to have that ability to get those records transferred to a format that we can access.
I mean, I don't think the general public realizes how much we're reliant on our technology. I mean, everything from our water and sewer department to building department to fire, police, everything assessing. I mean, if we were hacked or something happens, I mean, our voting, so it could be a major disaster of huge proportions. So, relying on you guys to...
We're definitely working on getting to a point where if something like that happens, we definitely should be able to respond accurately and get us back up and running quickly. But it's definitely something we've got to work towards here.
Yep. We have our confidence in you. Anything for Mr. Roosevelt?
Yes, Joel.
Nate, the email, how soon before you see a change with that?
To the migration? I'm hoping still by the end of the year. We're working on some licensing things as well for government licensing for Office 365 that we're waiting on an answer for. So, right now, I still think that we can get it done by the end of the year. So, as of right now, that's the only update I can really give you on that one until we get an answer on that licensing.
We'll like the new system better than the current system.
I think so. And, you know, there's hesitancy usually with anything when you first start, but I think that with, once you start learning all the improvements and the new features that you can do using things like SharePoint and editing and collaborating on files through SharePoint and things like that, using Microsoft Teams, talk to each other, you're going to like it. There's not much difference when it comes to the Outlook client either, so that's a big bonus to a lot of people as well. So, it's not a lot to relearn.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I use it outside of here, Office 365.
Oh, yeah.
And use ours here, and I think everybody will like the improvements.
Yeah, me too.
So, anything else anybody want to ask? Okay. Anything, Mr. Lemina? Okay, thank you very much, and congratulations on coming on board.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the good work that you and Robbie are doing. So, thanks.
Okay, moving on to new business. Anything else under strategic planning, Dennis, that we wanted to cover or...
No, I knew this one would be a little bit longer. There was a lot to update, and I didn't even plan on what you guys may want to have an update on. Next time, I'll send it out, and then, you know, maybe we'll cover a couple of topics at the next meeting in two weeks. Just to bring you up, this one was rather lengthy. The next one shouldn't be. We're still making progress. Obviously, you know, we updated the board a little bit on that meeting with the north side business owners. That's been updated in the strategic plan. That'll probably be one that we need to bring forward, that community vitality goal of improvements on, you know, on the north side. So, look for those in two weeks.
We're getting lots of input on the strategic plan, on the code enforcement through social media as well, so lots of input there.
That's why I stay off social media.
Okay, so, under new business, the board will consider Resolution 21-27 is the number to adopt the updated master plan. This is something that has been in the works for a few years now. When this board was sworn in, I know one of the first things we did was said, hey, we want to take a look at this master plan, make sure it's something that meets what our expectations are. And I know that we've been, for about the last year, we've been working on it along with the Planning Commission and getting lots of input from residents and property owners, what have you. Brought on a new planning zoning director in that time, and he's jumped on that as well. Even this past week, we had a minor change to the master plan, future land use map, and I'm not sure, do we want to have any discussion on that or on the master plan?
Yeah, I think it's important, and Planning and Zoning Administrator Jeremy Smith is here to assist. But I think it's important for the board to know that, you know, we've gone through this. In fact, I looked it up. I think we initially had a Planning Commission Township Board meeting going back to like in 2019, maybe even 18, October of 2018, where we first said, okay, we need to update the master plan. It's a big deal. You know, this sets the trajectory for this community for the next 20 years or more, and, you know, we want to make sure that we do it right, that it's fully engaged, that the board and the Planning Commission are in agreement and moving together on this, because it's just, it's too important of a document that guides where we go. Future land use map is only one piece of it, where you're really starting to put your zoning districts in place. A big part of it is, you know, how are we going to get there and our action plans? And so, I commend the Planning Commission, and I commend the board in taking that step. You guys, the Planning Commission had passed it last year in November, I think it was. The board stepped in and said, wait, we reserve our right to approve it, which had always been agreed to. I think that was an important step because it's so important for the community. And thank God we did, because if you look at the amount of public comment, in fact, Chairman Gellings from the Planning Commission last Thursday night even made the comment that in 20 years of serving on the Planning Commission or 20 years as chair, this master plan had the most public comment of any master plan in the history of Graham Blank Township. That's good, because that's what the master plan's all about, bringing together all the stakeholders from the entire community, them telling you what they want, and then responding to it and creating that future. So, the change really was in the future land use map. It had to do with medium-density multifamily segment. There were about 10 changes, I think, total in the future land use map from November until the one that's before you tonight. Only one of them was changed, is that correct?
Correct.
And it was the medium-density multifamily on McCandlish near Saginaw to low-density single-family residential, and that was done based on a recommendation from our planning consultant, Skiffles Webster, after review of stormwater, sanitary sewer, they had the road commission weigh in on it, and of course, public comment. And as you guys all know, as well as the Planning Commission members, we received some over 80 email public comments, and that was the one that generated the most, and another one on Cook Road, but I think those questions were answered. So, I don't know if I left out anything. Jeremy, if you wanted to give a recap on what happened with the Planning Commission last week?
Sure. Pretty much covered just about everything. Another note to add in there, I met on September 7th with the Genesee County Metropolitan Planning Commission to review the update. They had no comments or concerns with anything going forward with the update as well. And then on September 16th last week, the Planning Commission met to approve the future land use map and the master plan, and with the minor change from low-density, from medium-density to low-density on the McCandlish Road properties, and the master plan was approved with a 7 to 2 vote.
And I think, you know, one of the, like you mentioned, Mr. Lemina, this board reserved the right to do what was originally planned for, which was to have, you know, the board look it over and put their stamp on it. And I think I'm very glad that we did. The board members have received lots of input individually from residents. It's been talked about on social media and the media, what have you, and just really, I think, made everybody more aware of what a future land use map is and what the master plan is. And, you know, it's tough to give everybody a civics lesson out in the public, but this, you know, certainly helped raise the bar a little bit in terms of what people understand as far as what the master plan, the future land use map does. I know that Sarah serves as the board representative to the Planning Commission and has kept us well-informed. But Sarah, did you have something that...
I do, actually. Based on the information from the planner regarding changing the zoning for the vacant property on McCandlish Road to low-density, single-family residential, I am in support of the master plan as presented.
So, anybody have any thoughts or concerns?
So, does that put an end to that discussion of that project, or could they come back?
So, as it currently stands today, across the street, it's still the current zoning, not the future land use map, but the current zoning map shows medium-density multifamily. So, it would not be spot zoning if they were to come forward with an application for rezoning to medium-density. This creates a little more of a challenge for them, but does not completely close the book on this, if you will.
What does the change that we're making allow them? Right now, they're allowed to have seven units per acre, right, on that parcel, the way that they were proposing?
10 units per acre on medium density.
Oh, 10?
Yep. Low density is four units, max.
So, four units per acre would be what the future land use map would allow for, so seven acres.
They still have to come for a rezoning, back to the Planning Commission, and then if the decision of the Planning Commission, it comes to the township board for final approval for rezoning.
Part of the challenges, as Mr. Lemina mentioned, was the surface water, the, which is basically stormwater, the sanitary sewer capacity, the road situation. I know we heard from, you know, at least 80 residents, if not more, with regard to the traffic on McCandlish. We all know that it's, you know, the complaint is that the traffic is so fast there, and there is such a large volume of traffic that to add 79 units right there near the corner would cause a lot of concern. So, those things I don't see being resolved anytime soon.
The, I've had a discussion with the architect, and they are working on some of those items, but until they are to our satisfaction, they won't be allowed to come for rezoning at this point.
Right. So, without having capacity for stormwater or sanitary, it makes it difficult to rezone that property.
Very difficult.
Mm-hmm. And to my understanding, they're not very inexpensive fixes either that...
No.
Would be required.
No, it could be millions of dollars to fix one or all of those.
Right. Okay. Good question, Mr. Fike? Mr. White?
I'm just curious, and I get, we get to make the decision, but two people voted against it. What was the reason that, or did they have the same reason, or was it just two completely separate?
One was regarding the Cook Road properties. There was a question regarding the change from office to a flexible development that hasn't yet been defined, but in the previous master plan, flexible development was already in there. It was just never defined back then as well. So, by the end of the year, well, actually, by the end of, probably the end of October, I'd like to have something to the Planning Commission to have a text amendment so we can actually move this forward and actually get it defined, because we feel the flexible development in those areas that are on the future land use map, the new one that you guys have proposed, helps the area and is better marketable for those properties.
And Sarah, Ms. Hugo mentioned her reason why, which she'd been informed. Jeremy and Ms. Hugo had a conversation.
Yes.
She has better information.
Yes.
So...
I thought the Cook Road was more for like stores, like a grocery store or something. Is that what that was? The Cook Road for zoning, was that meant for maybe light office or...
It was zoned for office service, which is very light commercial. Now, this flexible development, we haven't completely defined it yet, but we are looking at partial residential and light commercial in there. So, that could be a whole range of items. That's the task of myself, Dennis, Jill from Skiffles, and Attorney Laddie. We all need to sit down and kind of build these zoning districts so that way, going forward, we know exactly what can and can't be done. It makes my day-to-day operations a lot easier if I have everything in a text amendment so we can go forward with new businesses.
And so, right now, it's zoned specifically, that area is...
Residential currently.
Residential only, okay.
But the future land use map shows this flexible development.
Okay.
So, what needs to happen now is flexible development has to be defined, and so, we get to more or less define what flexible development is. And the concern with the residents in that area has been, they don't want a gas station there, and they don't want a liquor store or party store or strip mall.
Correct.
They would prefer, but what the flexible development would allow, and we actually met with the property owner, Jeremy, myself, and Mr. Lemina, but allows for a mix of things rather than just, hey, it can just be residential or just can be office, but there might be a situation where you have office on the first floor and residential on the second floor or something.
Correct.
How does that work? Who approves the definitions for the flexible development?
So, any text amendment has to go to the Planning Commission first, and then it comes before you all as the authority.
So, we'll get a chance to see if we approve it.
So, when you met with that guy on Cook Road, is he happy at the end of that meeting, or was he...
I think he was more understanding what we were trying to accomplish. I don't think he was particularly upset or happy either way. He doesn't really have anything in the works at the moment, so with his input and the other residents or owners of the, in the area, we can take their input and we can build, I don't want to say build the suit, but we're going to build so that way we know exactly what's going to be in there so he can market it for any future businesses.
He would prefer that it would be general commercial. He wasn't happy that we were not allowing general commercial. General commercial, pretty much, excuse me if I'm wrong...
Pretty wide open.
Wide opens it wide up to everything, and we said, my concern was that if it came before our board as general commercial, that it wouldn't move forward and it would stay residential. So, if you wanted to move towards commercial, it needed to probably be, this flexible development would be about the most that's going to happen here, otherwise it's going to stay residential. And so, he understood it. I mean, we had a better understanding, but he's also waiting to see how flexible development is defined as well, because that will... But we also told him and the others that have flexible development designations to, you know, if they have a, somebody wants to develop the property, bring it to Mr. Lemina and Mr. Smith, and let's see if it fits. You know, we can always change the zoning if it's something that fits, so...
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Lemina? I think it's important just to note, and again, for the public that listens to the meeting, is that adopting this master plan and adopting the future land use map does not change zoning anywhere. You still have to come in and go through a rezoning application to make any changes. All we're doing is saying that, based upon all the feedback that we've received from all the stakeholders within the community, that this is a direction that we think is the most appropriate for those land uses moving forward. It gets reviewed every five years minimum, and so, if, and that's what we do, is five years change, and, you know, things, a lot of things can change in five years, and then you start looking at, you know, whether it requires another change. A lot of it, if somebody's been trying to market a property for the last 15 years and they can't move it in a, you know, in a good market, then you really wonder, is it because of our zoning? And again, a lot of our zoning is to protect the qualities of residential neighborhoods. So, things like flexible development, neighborhood, commercial, office space, all of those are designed to be buffers between more commercial uses and protecting the residential qualities of our neighborhoods. So, I think it's important when you think of these, why flexible development? Well, we're going to protect the qualities of the residential areas around it, but we're also going to give the land owner more opportunities to market that property, especially when you look at Cook Road and Dorit Highway. It's Dorit Highway now. It's different than it was before. It's different than it was before. Dorit Highway's coming through there. It's going to, if you were, if you were drawing it up with, on a brand-new map, that probably would be much more commercial use because it's Dorit Highway, it's an M-road coming through, but because we have the existing neighborhoods, it will evolve over time. And right now, flexible development is probably the right evolution of that tract of land.
I think that we've addressed the concerns that, you know, were brought to the board. I certainly wanted to make sure that, you know, we didn't ignore anybody's concerns that we were receiving emails on and phone calls and, you know, we're giving people heartburn. I think we addressed those fairly sufficiently. I don't, I don't know of any other, you know, issues that people have brought that we didn't look at and try to come up with a solution for. So, I'm pretty pleased with where we're at with the master plan, and I don't have any misgivings for, you know, looking at.
Yeah. Very excited of going forward with this, coming into it at the tail end, and then now we've amended it. This makes Grand Blank going forward a very marketable community, even more so than it was before. So, this really helps with Dorit Highway, Cook Road, Grand Blank, the whole, the whole major thoroughfares, it helps everything out.
Okay. Anybody else have any concerns or thoughts on the master plan?
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Okay. Supported by Trustee Fike. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing, motion passes.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Smith. I know that you came on board after a lot of this was already in, well, most of it was in motion, and you jumped in and helped us complete it and did a great job with that. So, as well as Mr. Limata, you done sabbatical for a good portion of it and jumping back into it as well.
Is that what we call it, a sabbatical?
Iatus.
Iatus.
Wilderness period.
I won't call it a vacation.
Wandering through the wilderness.
Yeah. Okay. So, item B, under new business, the board will consider a motion toward a network infrastructure refresh project to Tioma Systems in the amount of $70,347, and for the township superintendent to execute all related contracts and agreements.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. And supported by Trustee Fike?
Okay. Record roll call.
Well, Mr. Roosevelt, would you like to talk about what this is? Okay.
So, I feel like this has been a long time coming since I've been here. I feel like it's been always something that I wanted to get done, probably a little sooner than this, at least started, is replacing the network switches here, especially in the township building. We're kind of at capacity with our existing aging.
Tell us what a switch is for the?
A switch is something that connects, let's say, the computers up front in the office to the servers in the back, or the computers up front to the internet. So, they're able to basically route and create the connections between all the, the equipment, the networked equipment in a township, and also allow it to get online. What's up?
They're pretty old, the switches are.
Yes, they're really old. So, it's really past the time where you guys need to definitely upgrade. I think that doing so even with lower-end equipment is going to make a huge improvement. So, we are finally to the point where we received some bids on this project, and I recommended that we go with Tioma Systems for that project. We've worked with Tioma Systems for over 15 years. Recently, they've replaced our via-phone system for us, and we have no complaints with anything they've ever done for us. And, you know, I've talked to people around here, since I've only been here since March, it's hard for me to say that because I've only interfaced with them a few times on a few different projects, but talking with Robbie and talking with past employees who've been here longer, there's no complaints with this vendor at all. While working with them, I definitely get the feeling that they're definitely not out for our checkbooks, and they're going to be making sure that, they kind of have our best interest in mind as far, in my opinion. So, I did put in, I am new to this, but I did put in two potential motions there. I recommended that we add the optional feature that was put onto the bid sheet. Their original bid was actually $68,791.71, and so, that is for the replacement of all of our switches, the configuration in the actual, the purchasing and the acquiring of those switches as well. The optional feature is something for us afterwards. In IT, being a smaller department, it sometimes can be hard to have eyes on all of our servers at the same time while I'm trying to, you know, do tech support and, you know, work on all the other servers and all the other things that we got going on. So, it's definitely useful to have central management, and so, it's basically licensing for central management software that'll run on one of our servers and give us a view of all of our switches at once, and we can see anything that's going wrong with them if one of them goes offline, and it logs things for us to go back and look at later for purposes of when I need to determine what happened after the fact. So, we can.
Sounds like something that's needed. That doesn't sound extra to me.
All right.
Yeah. Mr. Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just a question, as someone coming in, are you, is it a wonder that we didn't have more difficulty with what we had prior to your effort? I know it's a subjective point of view, but I'm just, I guess I'm using, it's a somewhat rhetorical question because I want to illustrate the point that, you know, we've done an extraordinary amount, as you mentioned earlier in your remarks. And I, you know, I'm here, obviously, every day in my office, and you've been a very busy man in your time with us, and we're very fortunate to have you doing the work that you're doing and updating everything that you're doing. So, I'm entirely pleased with everything I've seen from Nathan and Robbie in all the work that you're doing. So, carry on.
I definitely want to say that the IT staff here prior to me and the township has probably done an amazing job with the resources they had at the time, so.
Here.
Okay. Further discussion?
Okay. Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
I think we had a motion.
Oh, yes, right. Motion in a second. All right, record roll call. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. Item C, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of replacement in-car and body cameras in the amount of $207,000, $207,011, and $0.50 from Axon with annual payments spread out over five years from the capital budget and authorize the township superintendent to execute all related contracts and purchase orders. Chief Wiles or Mr. Limata?
Just a little bit of history. This was planned for the in-car cams for this year, and in the capital projects budget for 2021, we had $125,000 budgeted. For the new board's information, body cams, body-worn cams, we tried them five years or so ago. The company that we had selected at that time, it was about a year-long process that led to a great deal of frustration and a complete lack of trust in body-worn cameras. And one of the things we believe that body-worn cameras are going to do for us is really assist our officers, because we know we have a phenomenal police department, we know we have a phenomenal group of officers, they'll actually assist us in some of the challenges that you get litigation-wise, people challenge you. So, we have every confidence in these things, but we didn't have any confidence in the company that we had used, and it took a year back and forth. They didn't work, the batteries didn't work, they turned on inadvertently. There was just no way that we could trust them. We had them up here so many times, back and forth, they promised us one thing, and then they would just deliver another thing. So, we stepped back from those because we didn't think that pushing it forward would have been the right thing to do. We certainly need our officers to understand that it's just another tool on their belt to go along with the other 35 pounds of gear that they're wearing on their person when they're actually working, and we want to make sure it was successful. And Ron brought it back up again this year. He was able to look at a pretty good change to what we had proposed with just the in-car cameras and to move forward with body cams as well. I'll let him take it from there.
Yes, Superintendent Limata mentioned, this has been, the replacement of the in-car cameras has been in the works for quite some time. You know, it would have been done last year. However, I was a little hesitant to bring it forward just due to uncertainty due to COVID, and I didn't want to certainly overtax anyone's finances, including the township. So, we put it on hold, moved it towards this year, which probably was a blessing in disguise because it gave us the opportunity to look at body cameras again, which will certainly make our department better and make our officers safer. Axon is a world-renowned company. Axon is the same company that makes TASER. So, TASER is Axon, so the TASERS you see on officers across the country, same company that makes these in-car systems and the body cameras. We were really looking at two different vendors as we looked through this, and it came down to really a service aspect. You know, as Superintendent Limata mentioned before, we went with a company five years ago, and the service was not good. So, service is important going forward, and Axon shined in that category, plus their product is top-notch. There's departments in every state across this country, across the world, that use Axon in-car cameras and body cameras, and that's the white reason we chose them. It is certainly an upgrade from where we are now. The system we have now, we've had for probably 12 to 15 years. It is starting to age. I'm thankful for Robbie and Nathan for all the work they do on that system to keep it running. They're good, but they're just not that good to keep it running anymore. It is time to be replaced, and that's why I'm here before you today respectfully asking approval of the purchase.
A couple of questions, I know, I think probably more for the public, but uploading of the cameras from vehicles, is that similar to how it works now, or?
Very similar, yes. So, now and going forward, a cruiser will pull into the parking lot, and it's done over the air. They don't have to plug in or take anything out of the car. They just have to park it within a certain area of an antenna, and it's done automatically.
Okay. Body cams, okay. And they're integrated together, is the idea between the car and the?
Absolutely. They work seamlessly together. There's a bunch of custom triggers you can put in there to activate the system, whether it's, you know, speed-induced, if your cruiser goes 80 miles an hour, it automatically kicks on, or they turn on the overheads, or where the officer just activates it himself or herself. There's several different triggers that will activate the system.
Do we install the system, or do they come out and install them?
In the past, we have done it with our fleet mechanics here. However, one of the good things with Axon is they bring people out, they send them out not only to install the system, but to provide training, and that was one of the things that we lacked before with the previous vendor that we tried to do this with. Like I said, Axon, they're a top-notch company, organization, and they want their product to be successful, and they go that extra yard to make sure it happens.
Mr. Robertson?
We've talked before, obviously, we're all very proud of the credentialing that the department has received. Does, is the, is part of that, that measuring, is the fact that we have these camera, the technology as part of our, as part of our department? Is that part and parcel of that?
For sure, a portion. The greatest asset we have in our agency is our officers.
Of course.
You know, they go out there and do a tremendous job each and every day, and I could not be more proud of what they do. This is no means a way to, you know, check on them, you know, babysit them. This is a tool to make them safer, to make their jobs easier, to better protect them from some of the things that they may encounter on a daily basis.
Okay. And another question through you, Mr. Supervisor, to Mr. Laddie. Could you offer a comment on the value of these recordings in that in a court setting or a legal setting if we found ourselves in one? Would you opine on that for me?
I can. I can see that all of these comments start out with, because our officers are so well-trained and perform so well, that these types of observational tools, like the car cameras and the body cams, only help to solidify the verification that Grand Light Township is operating excellently as far as procedures go, civil rights issues and all of that. Every time we get requests for in-car cameras for crimes, including drunk driving cases and assault cases, the defense attorneys almost don't even need to get with Grand Light because everything is almost always done to OT. I am also confident that body cameras will be able to provide objective evidence on our regional behavior, and so, I think it's just a huge plus for Grand Light Township from a defense standpoint legally, and we got to leave the officer safety issue to the chief. But I'm all in favor of showing the world what kind of work Grand Light Township police do, and this is just another tool to do that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor.
I think part of the other reason, I mean, we have to replace the in-car cameras, they're in their life, it sounds like.
Correct.
And if they offered a program where we could, if we did the body cameras, would be a significant?
Yeah. So, a couple of things that really piqued our interest, besides all the positives of body cameras that we've spoken about, and the opportunity that I spoke about to make us better is, we have to replace these in-car cameras. That's a priority. And initially, that's all we planned on doing, until we started looking at options this year with the body cameras. So, each of our officers right now, they have their in-car camera of our 17 cruisers. They also wear a transmitter on their belt, and that transmitter's a microphone, so it records voices when they're away from the car. Every officer has their own transmitter, and we planned on doing that with this new Axon system. That transmitter is about $600 apiece, so they're expensive. When we started looking at it a little bit more, TASER was offering a program at the time where you could, instead of the transmitter, utilize the body camera for $699 apiece. Slightly more expensive than the transmitter, but much more benefit for that extra $99, which was one of the key, you know, selling points when we made the decision to approach the board with this opportunity.
Mr. Fike?
Yeah, this is kind of expensive, you'll admit.
I do.
But I guess it's the cost of doing business. I mean, if we want to have what David was mentioning. What is the process if somebody wants to get ahold of our camera, our video? Do they just file a Freedom of Information request, and anybody can get that, or how does that work?
Yeah, so that is one way to do it. Of course, in criminal cases, you know, they are allowed, you know, to be given to prosecution and then to, but FOIA, you know, we, as a department, police department, we receive about 800 FOIAs a year, which is a big number. The additional work in the FOIA area has not gone without some serious thinking about how that would impact our department. Sherry Potter is currently our FOIA coordinator and coordinates all those FOIA responses. The good thing, another good thing about Axon is they provide their own redaction software in the program, and like I said, they tie in the in-car camera and the body camera footage, they tie in together, so there is some time savings there as far as the redaction. But we've talked internally about ways to make sure we can still provide that high level of service, meet any timelines from a FOIA standpoint, a legal standpoint, to make sure that we get those out in a timely manner.
Do we think the number of FOIAs is going to increase with this, or?
I don't know if the number of FOIAs will, but the work to complete a FOIA will certainly. A lot of times, we'll have FOIAs come in for all video evidence. Right now, all we have is the in-car cameras. Now, it's potential that we will have body camera footage as well.
Do most police departments have in-car cameras at a minimum?
I would say most, but not all.
So, I mean, we've had in-car cameras for quite a while.
A long time.
And those needed replacing, and that's going to be the majority of that cost. So, really, the body cameras are incidental when you look at the overall cost, but we're going to have to do it down the road anyways. The time to do it is now. What kind of timeframe do you think, or lifespan, the system would have, Chief?
Yeah, our current system that we're on, which is a different vendor, it's 12 to 15 years, that's about how long we've had that. So, I would anticipate a minimum of 10 years with this system. Now, there's always technology upgrades, and we looked at our current vendor for what current technology upgrades they had. The only upgrade to their system is an HD camera. This has HD, this Axon system, plus many more things our current system does not have. It's a far superior system from top to bottom.
Well, my expectation is, I think, you know, with insurance claims and, you know, frivolous claims, what have you, cameras are always, you know, a benefit. And, you know, given the track record of our police department, it'd serve us well to be able to have video footage supporting our claims in some of the cases that, you know, we might encounter in the future. And I think, you know, other police departments probably have seen. And I think, you know, other police departments probably have seen similar things, I would guess, but I think we'll save money over if we had any run-ins with the court.
Correct. And if I didn't mention it, the program, part of the program that Exxon has is a five-year payment plan, if you will. Like Superintendent Limata mentioned, currently I have, or we have, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars sitting in capital projects for the replacement of the in-car. So we have enough for the first three years of this program already. And through the budget process, speaking with Superintendent Limata, it's believed that we can, you know, finance those other two years, forty thousand dollars a year, in our capital projects to complete the payment of the project.
Any other thoughts or concerns or questions?
I think this will be more exculpatory for the police than anything. The one concern I have is, because I know about all the foias and all the work involved, are you giving thought to bringing somebody in to help, I mean, on more than a part-time basis?
Yeah, long-term, I think that's probably the direction we're going to have to go. You know, each year, foias, we get more and more foias. I mean, that's just the society that we're in right now. For this year, I do not see an additional full-time person for that. I see us utilizing some of our part-time personnel to assist in those matters, maybe assist with some other, you know, clerical administrative duties that we currently have.
Because I can imagine you're going to have three or four officers show up, they're all going to have their body camera, and all of those are going to have to be gone through.
Yeah.
For, so I think that you'd probably need more help for that.
And just so for the board's information, anytime we have an arrest situation where we're making an arrest, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, we're going to have a minimum of two officers there, just for safety reasons. There's two cameras there, there's potentially two cruisers there with there. So, Dr. Rieden is absolutely correct, the potential to have multiple cameras on, whether it's body cameras, in-car cameras, is certainly relevant and could happen.
Mr. Feig?
One more thing, Chief.
Sure.
When somebody files a FOIA, what exactly happens? Why is that so labor-intensive for you guys?
Well, it depends what kind of FOIA, what they're requesting. If they're requesting a copy of just a report, those are easy. We can pull those up in a matter of seconds. If they're requesting video footage, that is a little bit more labor-intensive because we have to go to the system. Our current system, in-car system, it was, to be honest, hit or miss if it was operating properly for a little bit. The fine work of Robbie and Nathan to keep it going when we needed it helped. So that's the hard part, getting the video, redacting the video, redacting reports, that's the labor-intensive portion.
What would need to be redacted, just for the public and the board?
It depends. So on a police report, it's all personal information. On a video, there's Lean information, which is Law Enforcement Information Network. We, all our cars have computers in them that have Lean on them. That screen cannot be in any video. There's radio traffic. Any Lean traffic over the air cannot be on any videos that are sent out. So that's some of the redactions. Depending on the crime, depending on what's occurring, maybe some potential faces, people, juveniles, depending on what's going on, could possibly be redacted.
If you're in somebody's personal home, is that...
Depending what is there. You know, there's, you're in a hospital, there's potential, you know, violations there that you, or redactions there you'd want to, you know, protect. It really all just depends on the situation.
So whoever's doing the redacting has to know what they're doing in terms of what they're pulling out and what they're leaving.
And I can tell you, you know, like I said, Sherry Potter's our FOIA coordinator. She is very good.
I'm just saying, if you were to bring in somebody, it's going to have to be somebody who knows...
There'd be a learning curve there for sure.
Because it could cause liability if they left out certain things that should have been left in and what have you. In terms of storage, we're going with off-site on most of our, moving towards off-site storage. I know currently, I think I've seen the room that we have the backup tapes for the current in-car cameras, and I think it fills a room from what I recall. How is that storage going to work with these?
So currently, our system, and you're absolutely right, we have a printer that prints, I guess, DVDs, backup DVDs for all of our videos. This is a cloud-based system. So everything will be going to the cloud with this Exxon system. And also, of course, we'll keep stuff off that cloud or get it off that cloud going by a record retention schedule for those things that we have to save or keep for an extended period. Those will automatically dump off.
Anybody have any other thoughts? Okay.
There's a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Hugo makes the motion.
Hugo makes the motion.
Supported by Mr. Feig.
Mr. Feig will support. Okay. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Feig?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. You're good. Thank you, Chief. Next item, Item D, the board will consider a motion to approve an agreement between Holly Township and Grand Blank Township for expansion of the township's water system into Holly Township in order to provide water service to Shannon Fasteners and authorize the township supervisor to execute the agreement. Mr. Limata?
This is something that we've actually first approached probably two years ago, Mr. Sears. Does that ring a bell? Probably like two years ago. Shannon Fasteners is built in the Holly Township out in Oakland County. Bought the property, they had planned on putting about five buildings out there. They found out that they had to put an engineered septic system to manage what they had. There is no sewer. The, they approached us at that time to see if we could extend sewer down, the agreement being that they would pay to put the infrastructure in and then turn that over to us as an asset on our books. We own it, we maintain it, we get the capital fees for it. That kind of brings you up to date. Now, of course, KCI came through, Oakland County's considering KCI. That's kind of rekindled this. They're really ready to go. They're behind in when they want to build buildings. They're ready to put sewer pipe and go, and it's been a, we've gone back and forth with Holly Township supervisor several times. Their board has considered it and approved it. We've worked with Genesee County Water and Waste through this to give them the sewer that they need. And really, it adds a customer to us. The benefit to us is that we're, not only are we adding a customer, we get the capital fees, we also get the asset of whatever they put in the ground, we own. So we, they might put a million dollars worth of pipe in the ground, and then Grand Lake Township gets that asset. Anything I left out? Jeff?
No, you covered it well. Holly Township, we have a similar situation. Holly Township right now, where part of the Woodfield development is down there. So we have a similar agreement for that section of Woodfield where we extended water and sewer, or the developer extended water and sewer to that neighborhood, and in turn, it was dedicated to Holly Township, and then Holly Township dedicated it to us. So we receive all the capital fees, we receive all of the water and sewer revenue from the billing, and in exchange, we maintain the system and supply them with services that they don't currently have access to.
So we benefit from the economy of scale. Obviously, you know, we have a thousand customers versus a hundred customers. We can afford to pay a lot more, we can spread the expenses, you know, a lot thinner amongst a thousand than we could a hundred.
Absolutely.
So with this development, how is this affecting our capacity, Mr. Sears?
This won't affect the capacity at all over there right now. All we're proposing right now is the water connection. Because of what Mr. Limata had described with KCI, we don't know what's going to happen with KCI in Oakland County yet. So right now, they're just wanting to build a water main, and basically, that gives them the ability for fire suppression if needed. For the size of the campus that they're wanting to build, their existing well system won't have capacity for all of it. So water capacity, we don't have any issues with.
And obviously, the Genesee County doesn't have any issue with it?
Correct.
We're actually, I think, one of the largest customer, water customers for Genesee County.
We are one of the, yes.
Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
Got a couple more questions first.
I have a few questions.
Mr. White?
Does this property join Grand Lake Township, or are there other properties sort of in between?
I believe there's other properties in between.
So I guess that's my first question. And the second is, if we're doing something like this, are we, has the thought of annexation of these properties ever come into consideration? I mean, we're building something for another township, so it seems sort of, I know a lot of cities, they'll only expand outward, and I know we're a charter township, so I don't know what all the differences are necessarily there, but they'll only expand outward, basically, if they annex that into their city. Has that ever been considered with sort of expanding the water sewer into these adjoining areas? And I know it's a county line, so that probably throws in a hole.
Good question.
That's a great question, Trustee White. In fact, when I got here and looked, I mean, I wasn't here when they did the initial expansion, and probably David may have assisted in that, but the initial expansion, when they did the build out of Woodfield, one of the things, it's called Public Act 425 agreement, where you agree to provide essential services to another neighboring community, and in exchange for that, you collect a portion of the taxes in addition to pick up the customers. Then you provide police and fire protection, or whatever you guys agree to in that agreement. Typically, maybe twenty-five-year initial term with a twenty-five-year renewal, or a fifty-year term with a renewal. I don't know if that was ever explored at that time, quite frankly.
We didn't explore it at that time. And I don't, and in this particular agreement, for what we're providing to them, I don't necessarily think that annexation would be a benefit to us. It's true that we are providing a service to them, and we've got an economy of scale benefit. We're not, we've agreed not to charge them an additional rate, or make money off of what we provide them. But I think, I think given the configurations, particularly the fact that we're across county lines, I think that this will serve as probably a, this is a sufficient agreement for Grand Lake Township. I don't necessarily think that this piece, and also don't necessarily think the piece, the residential piece, is something that's attractive enough for us to consider annexation, but it is a great, it's something to consider, right? And if we were in the business of, if they were sort of better oriented geographically, and there was more service possibilities for us down there, I think we'd be exploring something that's a little more profitable for us. But given the lay of the land, I don't necessarily think it's worth it to, for us to pursue.
Mr. Feig?
Yeah. To Dennis, have you thought about the future, though, about if Oakland County goes with KCI, and if this company builds, this is going to be building two, if they build building three, four, and five, or whatever, how we would factor into all of that?
Yeah, so as part of our discussions over the last couple of years, one of the things we talked about is, number one, you know, we want to make sure that we have capacity both in water and sewer moving forward, if we end up building the sewer out into there. The other thing is that we say we're going to get the asset. Well, if Holly Township, and again, they'd have to bring the water all the way out from the Village of Holly, I mean, it'd be years away before they actually got a water system out there. Maybe quicker with KCI to get sewer out there if Oakland County participates. But what would happen, say, if they, we put a water line out there, they're going to pay to put the water line in, then they're going to give it to us, and we own that asset, we own that water line. That's great, because now we own the asset. But what happens if they do get water, they do get sewer? And so we made sure in the agreement that that means that they would have to purchase the asset from us. We don't just then walk away, we lost the customer. We're getting the capital fees upfront, which is their buy-in to our system. Then we're getting the asset that they're putting in the ground and turning it over to us. In the event that five years from now, they say, great, we have water and sewer, and, excuse me, we want to take it over, we say, fantastic, here's the depreciated value of that system, we'll sell you the pipes in the ground, now they can be your asset for a monetary consideration. So we are protected that way as well.
And I think it's important to mention, there's an exhibit attached to this agreement where you can see the property that's outlined. It's called District B, that can be served by this agreement, and it only encompasses the Shannon Fasteners' property. So there's no adjoining properties there that this water main can service, according to our franchise agreement with Genesee County.
And looking just at, if you look at Google Map, Google Earth, you'll see, or a map, you'll see that most of the property between, I don't know, is it, are we extending it from, say, where Security Credit Union is in that vicinity?
In that vicinity, yeah.
So if you go from like Security Credit Union area down to Shannon Fasteners', most of the property in between there is actually probably state land, because you're going under the expressway exit and what have you there.
Right. There's a, if you're familiar with the area, there's a property, Dixie Lodge, where our water main ends. So they'll bring that water main south down Dixie from Dixie Lodge, and then they're also going to run it up McCleland Road to where our water main deadends too. So they're going to finish a loop there for us also, which is beneficial to our water system. And then from there, they'll extend it further south to their property.
Mr. Rooden?
So what happens if they decide they say, we're not paying our water bill? What's our enforcement mechanism, because they are not a township?
We always have the right to shut their water off. And as far with Holly Township also, with the Woodfield portion, that's our recourse for if somebody doesn't pay their water bill. We haven't had that happen, but obviously, it's a very large industrial facility. Hopefully, it doesn't come down to that. This agreement also requires Holly Township to be cooperative with us also, so that if there's any kind of enforcement issues that we have to take up with the customer, Holly Township has to assist us in that as the governing municipality.
Okay, so then they could put it on their tax bill? Is that...
That I'm not sure about.
So they do, yeah. And so the, with the agreement with, that we have with the residential piece in Holly Township, they have said, there's an agreement that says that we will, we will send them the invoice essentially, and they will, they will place them on the tax bills of the property. And so I'm envisioning a lot of the same sort of enforcement mechanism there. With water, it's easier, because you shut it off. You don't have to dig down and cap the sewer. So I think, I think in that regard, we're good. If we do, I don't, I don't, I think, again, with that inter-county solution, I don't think we're going to find ourselves in the sewer situation. But if we did, it would be, be more important to clarify that language, and it already exists in the residential piece. I think we've got them covered with the ability to just shut the water off.
Okay, so maybe that would be something we would want to do, though, is clarify the language for the residential piece.
We've got it for the residential piece.
We do? Okay. Okay.
Good question.
Yeah. I don't know.
Mr. Feig?
If another company comes, Dennis, because there's a lot of land down there, and wants to do the same thing, I mean, have we, are we all ears? I mean, are we, would we consider that?
Genesee County has told us already, this is probably the last franchise agreement they're going to grant to Holly Township, to us, to provide water to Holly Township. Anything further, transmission line will have to be built down to Holly Township to service the community directly from Genesee County.
And then they become a Genesee County customer?
Correct. A wholesale community like we are.
Mr. Chair, could I just...
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Laddie.
Jeff, I just want to point this out on your, on your diagram. That, McCleland Road is not actually the county line. It actually, county line is farther up into Woodfield.
Correct.
So this, these aren't even, it's not even adjacent to us.
No, it's not.
Parcels over, so...
There's a blue line up at the very top of that diagram, that...
Oh, and that's the...
That's the county line. Correct.
And the red dash is the actual...
It's District A, which is the original franchise agreement with Holly Township.
Okay. Any other concerns? Okay, roll call.
I need a motion in a second.
Okay, I thought we had one. Motion by Ms. Hugo, support by Dr. Rieden.
Okay. Very good. Trustee Feig?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Okay, the board will discuss the recommendation of the Board Compensation Committee. And so we actually included in the packets for this meeting, some information.
so we actually included in the packets for this meeting, some information. First up is a policy recommendation. And we had discussed as a board, having something in place that would allow, or put in place, that each board, upon their, being close to the end of their term, would examine what the pay was for the board, and what it would be for the next board. And that doesn't mean just increases, that could be a change in pay, one way or the other. Could be responsibilities had decreased, it could mean that pay would be decreased in a commensurate manner. As everybody knows, we can't change the pay downward for any board member during their term, but we could for the next elected officials. And so what this policy is an attempt to do is to, more or less, put in place something that would mean that future boards would have to look at this every four years, for the incoming board, whoever that might be. So, did I get that correct, Mr. Limina?
You did indeed.
Okay. I don't know that we need to read it, but anybody have any concerns on, on it, purpose to provide a policy to guide elected officials in establishing, reviewing, and studying fair and equitable compensation for all elected and appointed board, committee, and commission members? So, any thoughts on this? Something I think we all agreed is needed, right?
As committee members, what I mean, what did you, what are your guys' thoughts?
We were in favor of doing something like this, and we have a committee made up of Treasurer Kilmer, Mr. White, Mr. Feig, and myself. Any thoughts, Mr. Feig or Mr. White, on this policy in particular?
Well, we thought that the board should vote on it.
Mm-hmm.
That it should get a straight vote, first, the policy, you know, that you just mentioned, secondly, the pay raise for the three of you, and then, third, the trustees.
We weren't looking at doing that this evening, though, I think.
Right.
We're just reviewing the information.
Right.
And we wanted Mr. Kilmer, Treasurer Kilmer, to be here when we do vote on it.
Mm-hmm.
But this, so the first thing was this policy that we wanted to cover, and then we'll talk about the.
Oh, the other part.
The raises. So, yes, Mr. Robertson.
If I understand correctly, the issue before us, or that will be before us on October 5th, is the adoption of the policy. We will not be casting, and the policy would be for us to revisit the issue in late 2023. Is that, is that, is that, okay, what am I misunderstanding here?
So the recommendation of the committee coming out was, number one, the policy, to adopt the policy. Number two, to consider the compensation. Both the clerk and treasurer were very clear two weeks ago at the last meeting, that they didn't believe that there was an adjustment needed in their positions at this time. So the committee did not come out with a, with a recommendation for those two positions. But the supervisor's position and the four trustees' positions, the committee has made a recommendation on what that compensation should be, and they wanted it to the full board for consideration tonight, with the idea that on the next meeting, two weeks from now, October 5th, the board would have motions before them to consider the adoption of the policy, so that we're guaranteed that at least every four years, compensation will be reviewed, and also motions or resolutions for each of the positions to consider, for the supervisor and for the trustees, two resolutions about increasing their compensation, effective, whenever you guys want to make it effective.
And so the recommendations don't necessarily mean that it has to stay at that level. It could change, but that was what transpired, and since we're moving towards that, so we've got the policy. We have also in the packet, the salary survey of the various municipalities. The, one of the things that we also received, Superintendent's Office put together comparable, and what they did was, they looked at, what, 90% of the highest wage, where that would place Township trustees, myself, and we did that with the treasurer and the clerk as well. Why did we pick 90%? And that 90% is where we try to be with our staff. Is that correct, Mr. Limina?
Right. We've been trying to move towards getting people so that, when we choose the comparable and like communities, that our overall compensation is equal to at least 90%, or around the 90th percentile of what comparable communities. We want to be an attractive employer, and that's kind of been our target. In fact, we're going to undergo, next year, a complete compensation review. We'll come before the board, to see if you guys want to move that forward, so that we have a chart of every employee in the organization, and where they fall within comparable communities. That's always been the goal. We're Grand Blanc Township, we're trying to attract and retain the best, and that's where that 90th percentile came from.
So if you look at the spreadsheet that shows the comparables for other municipalities, currently trustees in Grand Blanc Township are at $5,702.75, and also $100 technology stipend per month. And so what is being, what would bring them up to the 90th percentile is going to $13,257 per year. For the supervisor position, which I haven't determined what I'm going to do yet, but my current is $18,000 with insurance, and a 90 percentile would bring it up to $35,550. Currently, the clerk position is at $59,972, with $100 a month with insurance, and $100 a month technology stipend. The treasurer, same, $59,972 per year, with insurance available, and $100 technology stipend. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. The committee wanted to put it out there for the public to make comment on. In fact, we had a public comment at the meeting. They said, hey, I have no idea what you guys are looking at. So, you know, it was a valid point that, you know, how can the public comment on any suggested increase if we aren't proposing anything? And so we just put it out there. Nobody said that, you know, we didn't talk about how we would vote on it, but, or if it would have changes to it, but this is what the 90th percentile brought it to. And so we're putting it out there. Public has a couple of weeks more to comment on it, and we wanted to, and we talked about, do we hold a public hearing, or Mr. Limina, you know, went through the Michigan Township Association handbook, that state law, that states, you know, the different ways that you can handle this. You could have a compensation committee made up of the public and all this, but it is so arduous in terms of what you have to follow. Nightmare, I think, for us to try and comply with all the regulations. But again, this is something that, you know, has been feared by certain boards, and so it was kicked down the road, and, you know, we all know, you know, where this, the history of this thing. So it's, we've all spoken on it. Mr. White, you know, said, hey, let's, you know, we were voted in to make bold decisions. We've had others say, you know, they're concerned about it looking like we're feathering our nest. And so we're putting it out there again for the board, or, I mean, for the public to comment, and let's see what that brings. So, any thoughts from anyone? Comments?
We'd love to hear from the public.
Yes. Yep. So, and if you want to know what we do, feel free to contact any of our board members, or contact me if you want to know what my week looks like, and we'll be glad to outline the various boards and committees and everything else that we serve on. Township board meetings, every two weeks, are only kind of the tip of the iceberg of what the public sees that we're doing, but the work leading up to our meetings is really where we put in the time. With that, if anybody has anything else, we'll.
Yes, Mr. Limina? Then I intend to put it on the agenda of October 5th, and it will show up as, first off, is a motion to adopt the policy, and then it would be two resolutions to adopt the compensation committee's recommendation, and then the board can take that in whatever direction they would prefer, unless I'm going to get a different direction from you guys tonight. That would be my recommendation, it would go on the next agenda, so that we can put this baby to rest, one way or the other.
Yes, Ms. Hugo?
I personally would feel more comfortable with public input regarding the compensation. It's obviously an awkward situation, I think, for all of us, at least for me. I don't, I, and I mean, I can, I can say, in the past, at previous positions that I've held for employment, I have asked for a wage increase, but I feel this is just a little bit awkward for me. So.
Well, yeah, there's really nobody to go to.
Right, right, right.
If it helps, I did build it into the fiscal year 2022 budget, as presented this evening.
And we figured it was at least 20 years minimum, that since this was adjusted. You know, in over 20 years, a lot has changed. And, you know, there were some times there where nobody received any increases, but we tried to make up for that time period with our staff. And I truly believe it's time to do something with our board. It's just, you know, it is difficult, you know, to do this, and I think we're all here to serve, you know, the public, and, but, at the same time, something that has been overlooked over the years, too. So, it is a difficult situation that it places all of us on. I'll agree with that, sir. Yes, Mr. Laddie?
I think I said this last time, but I understand your personal feeling, and it is awkward for you, but it is, this isn't personal. This really doesn't have anything to do with you. It has to do with the office. And so you got to kind of separate yourself from the responsibility of the office and yourself. I know, I love that you're, that it bothers you, but you got to look past that. And because you, again, you owe it to the office, and to the township, that's my thing.
Okay. Thank you, David. Thank you, Dennis and Melissa, for putting all the work into this. And we're going to put it to rest in two weeks.
[laughing]
One way or the other. But we do want to hear from the public, so please send us your emails and comments. Okay? With that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is an exciting issue, and that's, the board will consider Resolution 2128, which is to approve a total authorized levy. And I think this is correct, on this one, 6.8293 mils, for tax year 2021. Okay? And I guess I'll read through them. 4.4565 mils for township operating, .9898 mils for extra voted police, .1520 mils for extra voted mosquito, .9872 mils for extra vote, voted fire, and .2438 mils for extra voted parks and recreation. So, Mr. Limina, would you like to translate this into terms that are public?
Absolutely. We're required to pass a resolution to form, it's L4029. It has to be submitted to the county by the end of September. The county needs to, they're on an October 1st budget, so they need to see what everybody else is kind of budgeting as well. So the form is required to be into them by September 30th. This form, you'll go through a truth and taxation hearing as part of your budget process. You could have held it tonight, we could have noticed it, did a public hearing, but you have to then still bring it back out, the millage that will support your budget when you do the budget. In the past, the board had done that before, did a public hearing on truth and taxation before September, so in August or September, to get the 4029 passed, goes to the county, and then we basically have to do it again. You're only required to do it once. So we're just asking for the resolution to get this approved. It requires the supervisor and clerk signature, so that we can submit it to the county. The one thing that you will note is that, again, because of the rollbacks that we're required to go through, you'll note that the millage has rolled back. We collect less millage than we collected the year before, as a, you know, when you look at the actual mils. The one that I will point out is on the mosquito millage. The millage requested to be levied on December 1st was .1520. In the initial packet, and initial, you'll see that it was different. With our new Director of Assessing, she put it in there at the full .2317 mils that you're allowed to collect. If you wanted to collect that, you can, but I base the millage rate on what I need to cover the cost for our mosquito abatement program, and this will bring in roughly $217,000 next year, which covers the cost to rose pest solutions for mosquito abatement, plus the cost of doing the required mailings and postings that we do, so that it's covered. Again, it's not perfect, obviously taxable value can shift, but it's the best guesstimate that I can come up with. So, the millage requested to be levied is less than the maximum allowable millage levy for mosquito, for that very reason. We don't collect more than we need. We're only asking for what we need, so that we can pay the bills.
Mosquitoes are winning this year.
Yeah.
What's that, Mr.? The mosquitoes are winning this year.
Just a brief question, just history. How was the original amount arrived at, the one that were, the maximum threshold?
So, all of these, when they were extra voted millage, you know, obviously, the original millage authorized for operations, charter operations, were five mils. Then the rest of this.
I was referring to the mosquito.
Oh, just mosquito. So mosquito went through there, when it was initially adopted at a quarter mil. And once it goes through, or .2377, that was arrived at what we thought was going to capture the cost of what we needed for mosquito abatement, but through the various programs and renewals, that amount changed, and so our millage amount. We never collected the full amount. The township could have collected the full amount the whole time, built up a mosquito reserve balance, and then not collected it one year and paid. Instead, we've always only put the amount that we knew we needed to pay the actual cost of mosquito abatement. That does bring up a good point, though. You'll note the expiration date of those millages that were authorized, on the far right column, on the 4029, and you'll note that your mosquito millage can only go through 1231 of 21. That means, after we send out our tax bills this year, we can still collect it, but at some time in 2022, the board will have to make a decision to put that mosquito millage request back out to the voters.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any questions, concerns? Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, if somebody cares to make that.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. Support by Ms. Hugo.
Ms. Hugo, thank you for your support. All right. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Feig?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, future agenda items. I know that Dr. Raridan brought up, you know, concerns with regard to library and senior center, and looking at, you know, funding for those, and how that's divvied up. Speaking to Attorney Laddie, I don't know, probably during his report, we'll talk a little bit about where we can cover that, maybe, that topic.
Okay.
Anybody else have any future agenda items that you want to make sure that we cover?
I had, about the garbage issue, picking up the yard waste and just throwing it out in the landfill. Has that been resolved?
No, actually.
And you weren't privy, this was me emailing, or maybe I CC'd you on it, about, oh, when the trash has been coming through, at least at my house, they're just throwing away the yard waste bags in the landfill, and what's the point of even bagging them up at that point?
Right. And I think what we need to have is, this has been a rocky year for recycling yard waste. I mean, let's face it, this was a tough year. I know COVID had a lot to do with what happened, lack of employees, but I think we just need to have MTA come in, because we still have a few years left on the contract extension that we signed. We need to have them come in and just do their presentation to the full board, so that you guys can make sure you get your questions answered, and we actually have the folks here on the hot seat that answer those questions.
I think that'd be very helpful, to actually have MTA. Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, I agree. I think we should have MTA in to give us a presentation on the, basically, the status. We fielded a number of calls along these lines, concerns about garbage being put in with recycling, yard waste being put in with garbage, what have you. On a number of the occasions, because I seem to, I fielded 90% of these calls, is that, they insisted that many of their trucks are dual compartment, that is, that. That is that, um, that the items remain separated, though they're on a similar, uh, on a single truck. Uh, and then emphasize the fact that, uh, the, the yard waste is picked up separately. But, uh, again, I, I, in each and every case, uh, what I've done is I've forwarded these, uh, these complaints to the point, our point of contact, um, uh, Mr. Garmin, uh, and asked him to speak to each and every one of these individuals individually. I reach out to them personally, find out what they observed, how, you know, what occurred and so on. And I, I, I think he's been, he's been, he personally has been very responsive to any call or email that I send to him, usually within, within that same business day or certainly the next day. But, but, um, uh, and then, so, you know, we are attempting to address each and every one of these as they occur. Uh, but I think it's, it would be a very worthwhile thing to have MTA and Mr. Garmin come in and give us a status report on the situation.
Right. I think additionally, I think also going through, um, I know that, uh, Mr. Lemina and Ms. Roberts working with them over the past year. And I know COVID kind of slowed things down a little bit with MTA. But, uh, we tasked them with, uh, helping to educate our, our residents on what can go into the recycling. Um, I know the county, I posted on some of the social media, um, you know, something that the county put together in terms of, uh, you know, recycling. I'm not sure, you know, it's not real detailed, but it's a start. But I think that's another area of concern that we need to figure out. How do we educate the public on, on recycling? We have lots of enthusiasm for people wanting to recycle, but I, I think some of them is misguided in terms of what they're throwing in the recycle bins. And I want to make sure I'm not wasting my time either and, and putting all these items in recycle bin and then finding out that, hey, there's going to landfill anyways, or I'm slowing the process down. So I think that would be a, a good topic along with that.
These guys are trained, if they, like, they see recycle. If you have a pizza box or food box in there, they throw it in the trash because you, if they put it in recycle, it ruins that entire load of recycle. So we have to do a better job of education. Uh, Grand Lake Township really does have a good turnout when it comes to recycling, but I think we just have to manage, uh, some people's enthusiasm better to make sure. They, they take more things now than they used to. They were able to increase that stream this year. They built an entire facility last year, uh, pre-COVID in like Lansing area so that, because they couldn't get it, uh, where they were sending it before and we used to send a lot to China and, and that had to stop. So they built their own sorting facility, MTA did, in Michigan, uh, to accommodate it. And obviously they take everybody's, not just theirs, uh, because that's the only way they can make it pay. And, and then when recycling stopped, uh, they lost money even on, on the new plant that they had just opened as a sorting facility. So it'll be interesting to have the conversation. The, you know, the yard waste going into the garbage, I can't imagine a scenario because it's not, you're not, to put compostable materials in that, um, is an interesting response. Uh, the recycling, if they throw it in because they see it's contaminated, hallelujah, I get it. Um, but we still just need to create, uh, public education materials to keep getting it out. People have the desire to do it. They just might not be doing it exactly appropriately.
Yeah. It's actually to the detriment of the landfill to have, uh, the yard waste put in with the garbage because, uh, you know, part of the problem with land, uh, landfill space is filling it up with stuff that could be composted. So they really don't want to have a bunch of, you know, and I believe some state laws come into effect there too. But I think we also may want to check with the county, uh, planning office because I, I, I heard that, uh, at an upcoming Michigan Township Association, uh, countywide meeting in October that all of our board will be invited to. There's a, uh, a meeting that, uh, so the county is going to make a presentation in terms of a fee or something like this that is going from garbage collection. I'm not sure entirely, but anyways, we'll have to get in touch with their office and maybe they'll want to come and present as well. I don't know. But, um, okay. Any other topics that we want to make sure we cover in the next couple of meetings? Okay, and you can always call me or email Dennis Rais. With, um, and also I, you know, I also would be remiss if I didn't, uh, personally thank Dave Rob, Clerk, Clerk Dave Robertson for fielding, um, all the calls. You know, one of the things that, if you look at, at the state law or in our MTA, uh, guidebook as far as the responsibilities of a clerk, um, garbage phone calls are not clerk's responsibility. However, um, a few years back, we, we said, you know, it sounds like something the clerk should handle. Um, and so, you know, the volume of calls, um, and, uh, you know, Dave pulls his hair out over this because. Because the volume of calls of people that either their garbage can, um, lid was lost or torn off, um, or things blew out of their recycle bin, or why are they throwing compost in? Uh, Clerk Robertson fields all those calls. And, uh, I know, you know, he's in touch with MTA hourly on garbage days. I mean, day following it. So thank you very much, uh, for handling those for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor. I appreciate the, the, the kind words. I also want to give acknowledgement to, to my deputy clerk, Lynn Henry, who also fields some of those calls and the staff in the front office, uh, Daphne and Alisa and Nancy, who all help out with, uh, with when the phone's ringing off the hook. They help answer the phones too, and they've fielded a few of these themselves. But it, you know, it, like I said, it largely falls on my office, so I do the best I can. But I'm ably, ably supported in that task by everybody in, in the front office. So thank you.
Thanks, thank your, your entire staff for our board, uh, for handling those calls. With that, we're gonna move to board reports. Ms. Hugo, anything on the planning that you haven't covered already with?
No, everything, um, we spoke to earlier regarding the resolution of the master plan is pretty much it.
All right, very good. So that's a monumental task getting that behind us now. Uh, Mr. White, anything with the zoning board of appeals?
There's a meeting next Tuesday.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Fike, anything Metro Alliance, no?
Nothing to report.
Any report, please?
We're the big thing.
Okay. Our treasurer is at a conference, Clerk Robertson?
I have nothing, sir.
Okay. A few things, uh, going on. I was at a groundbreaking ceremony and, uh, received a real nice, uh, plaque for our wall. Um, it's for a $5.34 million project for a, uh, elevated water tower. It will service our area, um, as far as a backup. Um, when power goes out, the pressure, we won't lose pressure. Um, I know we had that happen a couple of times this year with power outages in the north east portion, I believe, of the township where we lost pressure due to power outages. Um, here's a little picture of it if you guys want to see it, uh, pass it around. But, um, so it's something that will service our area significantly. It's at the corner of Center and Atherton. You'll see that they've already got the equipment out there. The county is helping to fund that so it isn't totally on the ratepayers to, uh, to pay for, um, that project. Some of it's coming from the ARPA funds that they're receiving, I believe. Uh, another, uh, update is that, uh, had a meeting with the road commission advisory board this morning and, uh, some good things happening there. Uh, the Dort Highway project is back underway. Uh, they have been working on it for several weeks again now. Um, they tell me that, that it still could be completed yet this year. That, uh, they're saying that, uh, the pathway won't, but, uh, that'll be next year's project. But that the road itself, uh, well, they're hoping this year yet. The roundabout at Embry and Grand Blank Road, uh, what's slowing things down now is that, uh, um, they're waiting for consumers to move a high-pressure gas line and a, a utility pole. And, uh, I guess consumers is paying every day that, that the project's delayed. So, uh, hopefully it won't be too long. And, uh, maybe they'll be able to open up, uh, Grand Blank Road and work on Embry after the traffic is flowing on, on Grand Blank, which would free up some of the traffic that we're seeing, the congestion at Reed Road in Dort. But I know it's been a headache for a lot of people and we've been hearing about it. The road commission also came out with a couple of new policies. And I'm pleased to say it was probably under the, uh, inspiration of our superintendent that they, um, came up with, uh, these new policies. Uh, they have about, uh, I don't know, 12 definitions on this page. And I'll give you a copy if you'd like. But, um, a couple of things that, that we were running into is that we get 50/50 money from the, uh, county. And what that means is basically, um, they would allocate a certain dollar amount to our township. So let's say it's $180,000 that they would allocate towards, um, road projects in Grand Blank Township. We would have to come up with a matching amount of money for road projects. And it could only be used on, uh, not the mainline roads, but I'll call them secondary type roads, but not subdivisions. And so we're running out of roads that, that we could use the allocation on. Our roads are getting to be in pretty good shape, at least the, the mainline roads or secondary roads. When you get into the subdivision, that's where some of the problems are and some of the roads that don't fit either category. So we had Office Park Drive, for example, this year that, uh, is over off of, uh, McCannlish Road that goes parallel with Saginaw Street. We wanted to use some money over there and, oh no, we can't use that. It's 50/50 money. And there, there's other similar type things. But what they're doing is basically opening the door for us to be able to use our 50/50 money for a wider array of type of projects, which is huge for us. And not every township qualifies for it, but a few do. And it's based on what the grade of the road is, uh, or the percentage of grades, um, here in the township. So that, that's good news for us. One of the things that, that we've seen is lots of input. I mentioned, uh, with regard to our discussion on code enforcement and getting lots of input, uh, from residents on that. Um, some of the concerns even with being able to park vehicles, uh, behind the front of a home. I guess, you know, it has to be behind the front line of the home or building, I guess. But, uh, is how many of those type of vehicles or boats or RVs can be parked? Uh, had somebody point out that, uh, a home that has about three or four of such of those things parked and it's starting to look like a parking lot, uh, behind their house and on the sides. Um, we had, you know, comment, uh, this evening with regard to the, the sides of the house. And I, um, I'd spoken with Attorney Laddie earlier today. And there is setback requirements that you can't just have, you know, a trailer squeezed in between two houses. Uh, there has to be setbacks and what have you. So, um, I'm sure that's gonna be something that our, our committee here is looking at. Um, what else here? I think that's about it for right now.
It's plenty.
Okay. So with that, uh, Attorney Laddie, anything to report on?
Just briefly, um, we have one last bit of business to conduct with the city as far as our, um, our Parks and Recreation Division. And, um, we have been currently operating our own Parks and Rec department since about February of, of 2020. And, and there was a memorandum of understanding that was, um, discussed by the, uh, schools and the city and the township as to, is to really, uh, back then, we were talking about how we would, we would take over the operation, the programming operations and maintenance of, uh, Creasy Park. The city would take over their own, uh, maintenance and operations of their parks. And then we would provide the programming for the, for the school, for the activities, Parks and Rec activities in the schools. And we did, uh, essentially, um, absorb the Parks and Rec, the, the existing Parks and Rec staff. We, um, resolved a lot of kind of the ongoing liabilities, uh, of Parks and Rec in terms of their rental agreements, their lease agreements. Um, we resolved any lingering employment issues that they had had and have been, have been operating, um, autonomously essentially, um, since that date. But what remains to be discussed, um, are the, the, the leftover finances. And I'm happy to say that they're in the, in the positive. And I, and I'm, it's interesting because we have, their assets are primarily in, in Flagstar, uh, Bank and also in, uh, State Bank here in Grand Blank. I want to say that there's probably a hundred thousand-ish, um, in two accounts there. Uh, very few liabilities to be considered. But, but one of the issues we have to talk about is how do we divide up the remaining cash? Um, in, into what proportions? And how do we handle the senior center, uh, going forward? Um, there is, uh, the issue, obviously, we know that we own, we're both 50/50 on, on the, the building and the property itself. The, um, operations are primarily to be funded through the, the senior millage. But there is, uh, there is money left over to be contributed. And so we're gonna have to have a discussion about how that goes. And so what, what I have been recently discussing with, uh, Attorney Walt Griffin is, is to get an accounting firm to, to review, um, the wind-up assets and the wind-up liabilities, get them on a piece of paper so that we can understand exactly what we have, uh, left over. And also to understand, not, not over the long term, but over the, over the short history of the wrap-up, who contributed what? And who would be entitled to whatever amount of money, uh, was left in there. And so what I, what I'd like to do, and I, I have not forwarded this information on to, um, Mr. Lemina or Mr. Bennett. But I, but I would like to have them consider the green light to go ahead and have an accounting firm, which I've, I've had preliminary discussions with, go ahead and do that summary of assets and liabilities and, and go ahead and, and retrace the steps of contribution and open up the discussion with the city as to how we're gonna divide that money and how these obligations are gonna go forward. And, and the one thing that we know is that the senior center is, um, it is, remains an unresolved issue. Right? I mean, the Parks and Rec, we've already physically separated ourselves. Um, we're gonna have to discuss how we're gonna handle the ongoing obligations of the senior center. And so, um, what I'd like you, first of all, I'll, I will get permission from, um, Mr. Bennett and Mr. Lemina to move forward. When I get the result, when, when the city and the township get the results of that, uh, accounting information, then I think we should set up, uh, a discussion time for us to hash through the details of the unwinding of Parks and Rec and then also how the assets should be divided. So that's coming up on your, um, I think your, you know, short to midterm horizon as far as issues to discuss.
Anything else, Mr. Laddie?
I, I know that's just a thumbnail kind of preview, um, and, and there are a lot of details to work through.
I think, I think, uh, Mr. Dr. Raridan has some.
Okay.
Well, I, I was thinking like the fire, 80/20, right?
Well, so there were, it turns out that there was not, they were not contributing that much.
Oh.
And, and to Parks and Rec's credit, it, it wasn't quite, Dennis, would you say it was maybe 70% self-funded?
73%.
Yeah. And so it did a pretty good job of, of keeping itself afloat. It needed contributions and the contributions were in different proportions. Uh, the, the township paid more than the city did. Um, and so fortunately, although, uh, you know, on the backside of it with, with money in the bank, uh, that's gonna work in our favor. But we'll see, um, how we, how we get all those things resolved.
Okay, sounds good to me. One item I, I neglected to bring up in my report. I, I inserted in the packet the, uh, legal opinion, um, from the attorney that represents the 911 consortium. And I, I've, we've discussed it at previous meetings. Uh, it's, uh, the 911 consortium this past week voted to recognize contracts with, uh, various municipalities. Uh, those contracts actually, when the motion was first made, uh, it was that they be exclusive. So what that means is that, uh, let's say that, uh, Monday Township has an exclusive arrangement with, uh, with MedStar ambulance service and Swartz, uh, ambulance has located their headquarters right across the street, right? Um, let's say that somebody's having a heart attack at, uh, at Home Depot. Um, and MedStar, who has the contract, is maybe five miles away, but they're still in Monday Township. Uh, but Swartz is right across the street. When 911 calls for an ambulance, um, in that case, they would have to go to whoever that municipality contracted with. In that case, let, an example would be MedStar. While Swartz would be right across the street. Uh, my concern is that, uh, the attorney opinion, um, says that, you know, we should be going with the closest available appropriate ambulance or EMT. And what, you know, these contracts, uh, ask for is exclusive rights or exclusivity. And, uh, I voiced my concerns in that. And I voiced my concerns in that I'm concerned about liability, and I've spoken briefly with Mr. Laddie earlier today, that I've spoken with the attorney for 911, and, you know, my concern is for our municipality. If, you know, it's just like Parks and Rec or any other entity that we've run in, you know, mutual agreements with, this 911 consortium is the same way, that we're part of a group, and I believe we share the liability of the actions of that group. And if we're going to be sued for, in the future, for only sending an ambulance because they had the contract and not the closest one, I've got some very deep concerns.
Yes, Mr. Dr. Raridan. I believe when we built the new police department in 2008, Ron, you could verify maybe, we set up where the PSAPs could go directly to our dispatch. Because if that's the case, we should strongly consider pulling out, because otherwise, we could be on the hook for somebody else's negligence. And we already have the capability right now, if we would, because we would still get the 911 surcharge to fund our own. I mean, it just, it kind of scares me.
Well, it concerns me because, you know, the legal opinion said one thing, and the group voted, you know, the opposite direction of the opinion, and it really threw me. And I voiced my concern that I've not seen the contracts, you know, that they're signing, but yet we're saying we're going to accept them. It's, you know, kind of bewildering.
Aren't we, again, I know it's a consortium, but aren't we the largest contributor individual?
Yes, by far. Well, and the other thing is that we're also potentially, how the funding works for 911 is that it's based on surcharges on your cellphone, on phone bills. However, let's say that that, for some reason, was disrupted, that funding source, like we weren't sure that the surcharge was going to come into place this past year. Well, in that event, the funding moves towards based on taxable value. And so with us having the largest, you know, we're by far the largest taxable value in the county, we would be paying, I would venture to guess, probably 60, 70% or higher of the cost of running 911. And so I would think that if there's a liability, we're probably going to be, they're going to look at that percentage, too, and say, that's what you guys owe. This isn't the first time, Mr. Laddie probably can tell you, that there was a lawsuit several years ago involving 911 and local EMS providers, and I believe it was like a $20 million judgment. And instead of paying the judgment, I think they said, hey, we'll figure out a solution. My.
Yeah, that's essentially correct. And this issue has come up in the past. I read that opinion from the current 911 attorney, and I, everything you said, Scott, is exactly right. We're the lion's share of the surcharge money, but we'll also be the lion's share of the pocket if something goes wrong. And so this is troubling for us. I think as a practical matter, and Scott, I just, we discussed this, and it makes sense, I think, from a practical standpoint, we're not in the position of having to come up with some exclusive arrangement because of the way that our township is set up and their medical providers here. We have pretty good service here, I think. And so it's not necessarily an issue of do we do this or do we not? I think we can get along without doing it. The problem is, though, if something goes wrong in the corner of the county, and somebody didn't get an ambulance when they should have, and something bounces bad for 911, then we are 60-some percent of the pocket. And so even though this issue doesn't necessarily affect us one way or the other, it could down the road, and so that's a little bit concerning.
I'm sympathetic towards the outline areas, you know, somebody moves to Forest Township or Davison for that matter, or, you know, on the west side, northwest corner of, you know, up in Montrose. Montrose got to the point where they organized a nonprofit ambulance service, because, you know, it's kind of like tow service. Tow trucks go to where the business is. Ambulances are located where they're going to have, you know, clients. I believe I heard that Atlas has about 20 calls a month. I also heard that it costs about $700,000 a year to have one of those ambulance rigs on the road. 20 calls a month isn't going to justify parking an ambulance in that community. So I understand that some of these outline areas, but there's nothing that would prevent them from having a millage to subsidize paying an ambulance company to park a rig out there. But for us to, you know, and the problem with these exclusive agreements is that if they park a rig in that area based on exclusivity, if that gets used with one accident, they're going to want to draw from the pool that's here. So they kind of want exclusive on the one hand, but yet want to draw from the pool when that one gets used. So I'm not sure how this is going to work out. It's been festering for a while, and it's coming to an head fairly quickly here. I was just blown away by the vote this past week, that it happened so quickly. And we had a committee meeting yesterday. It was pretty lengthy, and nothing was really resolved, other than we outlined, you know, probably the two problems, at least. One of the problems is the shortage of employees. The school that trains EMT workers primarily was shut down for the last year and a half, two years. So the life cycle of a lot of these people that work for EMT service, they last about two years because they get burned out. And a lot of people with COVID said, hey, you know what? You know, I've sat in the back of the rig with somebody with COVID, and then I've got to be quarantined for two weeks. They've had enough of doing that, and so they've quit. And so they're having a real tough time finding staff. So that's one problem. The other problem is the outline areas. I mean, that's an out, I mean, if you move to Alpena, Michigan, you're not going to have the service that you have in Grand Blank Township. But, you know, I know that's kind of a hard-nosed way to look at it, but I'm not sure how you resolve that problem of giving them equal service in some of these outline areas with what you have if you're in a dunces. I mean, we put up with things, too, that they don't have to, so, Mr. Raridan?
You know, I'm wondering about the liability aspect, and maybe David, if this vote is in favor of it, 12 to 10, of disregarding the attorney's opinion, and something happens, Grand Blank is going to be, or potentially could be, on the hook for something negative here, correct?
Yeah, it isn't likely that that could happen, but it's possible. And just the possibility of it is concerning.
Right now, they removed the exclusive, for now, is what the statement was, that they amended their motion to remove the exclusivity. So these contracts, even though they may have been written, I haven't seen them, but I understand they have exclusive written into them, they're not going to, the 911 service, you know, the vote was, for now, that 911 will dispatch the closest, that they don't have the software, and they don't want to have sticky notes that their callers, when they're dealing with somebody who's in a life-threatening situation, trying to figure out which ambulance service has the contract for which municipality. We've been approached to sign agreements, and it's like, we're not going that route, you know? Mr. Robertson, Clerk Robertson?
I appreciate the inclusion of the attorney opinion in the packet. The item was not a formal item on our agenda for discussion, so, but I am interested in more background on it. Maybe Mr. Laddie could prepare a more thorough opinion or more opinion that provides background, history, and so on. I don't know, but I'm looking for more information. I think there's a legitimate issue here. I, you know, we live in an acronym-filled world, but I haven't heard the term PSAP since, was it Holly, Groveland, and Rose Township brought it to my attention back during my time in the Senate. So I know that these issues have been percolating, and I remember them from my time in the House of Representatives. That's how long these issues surrounding ambulance service in Genesee County have been, you know, in discussion. So, and I am concerned about the, what, if the consortium is taking actions contrary to the recommendation of their own attorneys, then although it may not affect the service we receive, it could, I think you correctly point out the fact that we would shoulder, as a member of the consortium, a significant portion of the cost for their, for their acting contrary to perhaps Michigan-piled laws. So we need to have a further discussion on this, a more detailed discussion on it.
I agree, and we, and also, we need to have a discussion as far as Grand Blank Township goes, and whatever, what strategies are available to us, what options are available? Because I think we've got to be ready for whatever direction this thing goes, and we need to make sure that we're as covered as we can be. So I'm happy to, with Supervisor Bennett, I'm happy to continue to review it, and I'm sure Superintendent Limina is up to his eyeballs in this as well.
I think there's a number of options that we could investigate, and I think we probably should maybe have a committee to look at this a little bit further.
Yeah, now, we could capture that surcharge, I mean, correct?
If we could become a state-recognized PSAP, yes, we can.
City of Fountain, certainly.
Right.
They were always separate from the.
There is a, we did, and Chief Wiles and Chief Perdut are active with this, you know, group as well. I don't recall, but it was a 20% that you gave up to the consortium if you opted out, I believe. So you only got 80% of it, but Fountain came to the board petitioning to have that reduced, and I'm not sure what the result was, if they did reduce that or not, but anyways, the bottom line is, we're the major funding source for 911, and if we were to form our own, I'm not sure what would the future of the County 911.
Mr. Supervisor, my guess is that they would miss our 80% in a big way.
Well, I don't want to speak for the chief, but it seems to me we have the infrastructure in place to do that.
Right.
So it's kind of a matter of just the process, but I don't want to, I don't want to jump you ahead into any sorts of problems, but.
Well, I think the comments this evening, I think, warrant us maybe forming a committee, a few of us, and we'll have some discussions on maybe outlining what some of the options are that we need to explore. But I, it sounds like it's moving pretty quickly, so, or not sound, it is, because I've been there, but I just don't want to be caught behind the eight ball in this thing.
Well, I'm happy to work with you and Supervisor, or Superintendent Limina and Chief Wiles, just in the interim.
Okay, very good. I didn't mean to make it a separate agenda item, but I put it on, it's late-breaking that was after the agenda, and I wanted to make it part of my report, so.
Okay.
Mr. Limina, anything to report on? I'm sure if you do.
Two things, and on a good note. First, I have one question for the board, the budget meetings. You will note that at your place, you did get the hard copy of the Enterprise Funds, DPW budget for your review. Again, just like the general fund and special revenue funds budgets, take your time to go through it. Specific questions, feel free to contact myself, Director Sears, Finance Director Kathy Sostak. Like I said, we normally give you 30 days to kind of get through everything. But my question is, we can do a couple of things here. October 5th, I can have department heads in here, and we can give you the quick run-through of the budget process, you know, what's new for 2022, how we're achieving the strategic plan, what our goals are. Probably take about an hour out of a meeting time to go through it, or the board could opt to have just a special budget session, schedule it for an hour and a half, and we walk you through the entire budget and do a Q and A with each department head. Board's preference, what would you guys rather see? Do it during a regular meeting or schedule a separate budget session?
I think last year, we did it during a regular meeting, right? And we had each of the department heads kind of outline what's new for this year and what's, you know, what's a priority.
I like the regular.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good with that.
Seemed to work pretty good. I don't know.
It might, depending on what's on the agenda, we'll try to limit it, but October 5th could be a little bit longer meeting if we spend an hour on the budget, just what I'm going to say. And then, once we walk through there, then we're prepared to schedule whatever you guys need from us to answer your questions so that we can get through the approval process.
We need to take a deeper dive after that, if we could do that.
And so look for that on October 5th. The other thing, again, end on a good note, tomorrow, we will get our first payment of those federal American Recovery Plan Act funds, so a little over $1.9 million will magically show up in our account tomorrow, I've been told. So that's great news. The funds are here. We have until December 31st of 2024 to spend them. Again, as it stands right now, very restricted. We can't use them for what we would like to use them for. We can only use them for very specific items. We were unable to show a big loss due to COVID, 75%. You could make back up from a budget standpoint using their calculators. I can't come up with that type of loss from COVID, primarily because of the CARES Act funds and some other things that came in. But it's a nice problem to have. We're going to have $3.8 million to spend, anticipated to be even a little bit higher because some municipalities rejected ARPA funds, didn't want to, didn't want to deal with everything that goes with federal funds and having a single audit and everything else that goes with it. But again, water, sewer, broadband infrastructure, we certainly have a lot of water projects, we certainly have a lot of sewer projects going on. If nothing else, before December 31st, 2024, we can dedicate those funds to one of those projects. But great news, $1.9 million goes in the bank tomorrow.
And we have lots of good news coming, too.
We do.
Everything from pathways to development, so.
Here's a teaser from, the Planning Commission heard a brief outline of a proposed development, and it was predicated upon the board and the Planning Commission passing the master plan and the future land use maps. It means that in the very near future, Planner Smith will be busy, and you guys will be seeing a request for rezoning that will bring in a $10 million headquarters building, which is really cool. And tied to that, and they worked with us in the request, we picked up $1.7 million in grant funds to upgrade Baldwin Road. So great news on the economic development.
Lots of good stuff. So thank you, Dennis, and we'll keep moving forward. Thank you, everybody, for your time this evening.
Motion to adjourn, Mr.?
Oh, yes, please.
I'll make that motion.
Supported by Justice Hugo. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We are adjourned at 9:31 PM.